I think in the past, we have always split the money nine different ways for paving. And as we go forward, you know, I know three cents will generate three million dollars. So we can discuss it. I think the staff is ready to talk about it today. So if there's any question we want to ask in the work session, we can do for now. But I want that to come out in the record for the, uh, the regular meeting.
Mr. President.
Mr. Genright.
My only question is, do we remain competitive with our gas prices with the people in the, out of areas of Montgomery? How are we competitive? Are we competitive with that? Patrick, have you looked at?
Yeah, Pat. Go ahead, Mr.
I used to have a
I have one.
Gas dealer that kept me up on that. I don't have one anymore, but.
Yeah, my just observations as riding around town, riding, you know, uh, into the Elmore County area and kind of surrounding areas. Actually, Montgomery has some of the cheaper prices of gas, you know, uh, just yesterday riding around, uh, for instance, over by Garrett Coliseum. Walmart gas is two fifty-nine a gallon, uh, at that location. When you cross over into Elmore County, right in that area, if that's one of the areas you're referring to, their gas starts about two eighty-five a gallon. So, but obviously it varies, you know, uh, I mentioned Walmart right there on, uh, by Garrett Coliseum. Within, within a mile of there, you've got three different gas prices at three different stations. You go two fifty-nine, two sixty-nine, two seventy-nine. So even at the highest price, which I've seen generally in the areas, about two seventy-nine, you know, uh, that's still cheaper with a three cent add-on than, than I've seen in Elmore County. It was two eighty-five.
We were four cents higher the last time we dealt with this than Elmore County. Elmore County just making a profit.
Well, a lot of those rates are, I think, are, obviously you've got the tax rate, but then you've got the rate that's the, the store wants to sell at.
Yeah, and in reality, it's the cost of gas coming out of the pa- pipelines where the real number comes up. And it flexurates every day.
It really does.
You can't really tell. You've answered my question.
Yes, and Mr. Genright, I think on that, we, we being Montgomery, we have a lot more things that we're trying, not more roads to travel, to try to pave and do the things that we're doing.
I understand the need and no question about the need. We need, we need the money.
Okay, all right. Any other question?
Yeah, and I think, Mr. President, this is just another opportunity too, to reinforce, uh, the need because you don't just do this once every, you know, every year. This is something that comes along. You address it. I mean, three cents is reasonable, uh, I think, from where we are in terms of our needs. And as we pointed out last time, there's some other things that we can't do as a city that we've been limited on. And so we have to go find, uh, the revenue other places. We're getting calls constantly about the quality of our roads. We know that there's going to be some large bills coming, uh, incoming on, uh, the bridge side of things and other parts of infrastructure. My hope is that as part of this too, that we're, we're really looking at, um, you know, addressing our streets. I know, notice the city of Birmingham passed a complete streets ordinance, the way that they're kind of a policy for the way that they're looking at it. So that we're not just, you know, patching up, but, uh, also improving and building for the future.
You know, the, all right, next item.
Item five, application for restaurant retail liquor license doing business is Marius Korea Ramirez, eighteen sixty-three, Matt Matzow.
All right, Ms. Johnson.
Um, I'm okay with Mr. President.
All right.
Item six, review of the business license of Seaman Racker Service.
Ms. Mitch.
Mr. President, I would like to discuss it in a regular meeting.
Okay.
Item seven, ordinance amending the license tax classification sixteen, section sixteen dash one oh six, A M schedule.
Put number on that, item six.
Item seven.
Seven, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Calhoun, you know, you and I spoke about this this morning. And this was the first we found out about this.
Okay, and, and, and I'm just bringing this to the council's attention. I'm charging myself five dollars for that round rate.
Okay.
Oh, with this, and I think we had a discussion on this during the budget cycle where the, uh, Home Builders Association came before the council and they had some objection. And we pulled that off and passed the budget and you guys made the agreement.
Correct.
And it's my understanding that it was a fifty cent ask from, from the city of Montgomery that we negotiated to a twenty cent, to a twenty cent. And we moved forward with the agreement, we add that in. Now, this coming back in, I don't think it's been ran through, Bob has said he hasn't, and been ran through the finance department. It's something that we have created in the twenty twenty-five budget with this item in there. So the adjustment, I think we need to discuss this on how this is going to affect the budget because we know we added some items in this budget with some pay raises and some other things. So I don't want this to come back and we're putting this often affecting the whole budget.
I, I agree with you, Mr. President, but what I saw of this particular issue that's in front of us today took the Home Builders Association or home builder, builder from like eleven hundred dollars a year to eleven thousand dollars a year. And I, I don't think we had any intention of carrying the number up that high.
And that may be true, but as was stated earlier, this is the first time we've seen this when it appeared on the agenda. As a matter of fact, for me this morning, because I just now had time to actually look at it, there was no con, uh, communication with any council member about this before it went to the agenda so we could review it.
But, but y'all putting on the agenda the way it is today, and that, of today, it goes from eleven thousand to ele- goes from eleven hundred to eleven thousand dollars.
And we understand, we understand that. It was adopted that way, but if we're going to change this, we need to have some discussion about it before the council actually, uh, passed this. Because we didn't have time to look at it and we reviewed along, and Mr. Semenste, you were on that committee. Uh, I think Ms. Johnson was as well, Ms. Riley. And we, myself had three months of reviewing this with everybody that was on that committee. And this was not brought to our attention at that time. We did the best we could with the amount of time we had to get it done in.
But when the, can I, can I, can I say this also? I mean, we're talking.
Hello, go, go ahead, Mrs. Genright.
When the home builders came here, they made aware that we had a problem because at that point, they had figured they would go from a thousand to five thousand. And then when it came back to the council to vote on it, that y'all brought it back from the, from the finance, brought it back to us in, in December, it went from a thousand to eleven thousand. So it went up even further. So I don't know what's going on.
We still need that time to go back and review.
But, but I want to say, this, this is based on income of that business. So if we're looking at eleven, right, so if we're looking at eleven, uh, eleven thousand dollars, that business, if my calculations are right, had a revenue of somewhere around fifty to a hundred, uh, fifty million dollars. So we're talking about pennies on the dollar when we talk about the business license. So it, it looks like a big number, but if your business license is eleven thousand dollars, you made multi-tens of millions of dollars of revenue in that year.
Mr. President, I, I, I understand that point, but except that one thing that's unique about them, unlike an industrial or manufacturing business, they are paying the city permitting fees to build every single unit that they're doing, which stacks every single time. And as we champion how we are trying to develop new housing areas out of different areas. It's one of the only industries that has stacking of license costs, uh, in it. And it's one of the reasons why the state right now is evaluating whether or not they're going to outlaw that in general. I actually hope they don't. I just think that this is an industry that we are trying to, and if you look at it and look at the number of people that are over ten million, we're talking about like five. So it could be like fifty thousand dollars is all we're talking about in the bottom.
But, my ask, my ask is this, can we carry this over and review it together? Because this is the first time we've seen that there was, you all asking for a cap on it, okay? I think we just need to go back and review.
So moreover, when we talk about those, those, those fees and those permitting fees, because of economic development, a lot of times we waive those to encourage the development. So, you know, we can do one or two things. We can, we can do it on the business license side, or we can just stop giving incentives to developers, period. Because we give land incentives, we give tax incentives to those developers. So at the end of the day, they, they have an environment where there's an advantage there for them. Because from an economic development perspective, we do give them benefit, tax credits, a number of things. I have a number of, of developments that we have worked through and done, uh, negotiations with where we've either given the land at a premium. Uh, we've, we've done tax, uh, 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 credits we've done, or we just, we just, uh, eliminated some of the permitting fees. So which one are we going to do? Because at the end of the day, the city loses revenue in these situations. But that same, that same, that same class of people you're talking about, we give a lot of benefits to, to do development and do it, uh, to, to encourage it in our city. So I just want to be clear there.
It would make the business licenses for home builders in Montgomery exponentially larger than any other municipality. This is what we talked about back in September. And at the cap at ten million dollars, given the number of people that are in there, if it is eleven thousand, you know, a difference of ten thousand bucks, if we're talking about five or six people, we're talking about fifty thousand dollars. And we're trying to tell people, when Auburn builds twice as many houses as we did last year, and we're trying to champion getting more residents here, it seems like this is not something that we really, like a hill we need to die on. It's, we can evaluate it over two weeks, but I don't think that the overall impact is going to be that large.
Because we haven't looked at the numbers like you all maybe have, okay?
And understood, and understood, I understand you, and I agree with you on some of that instances, but when you use Auburn, they have an occupational tax. So once again, we have a revenue generation issue here. So you, occupational tax, they get a chance to do a lot of things that we don't get a chance to do.
No, I don't disagree with you. I just, I.
Ms. Johnson.
Mr. President, I just want clarity. I, I, uh, for the record, this isn't a we thing. It sounds like it's a he thing, uh, as far as this, uh, ordinance on the books. Who is also a member of the committee that met for three months, that also paused the budget for the entire city for one organization. And now here we are again, and if I'm clear, you just stated for five people. So again, here we are with an elected official that's supposed to represent the entire city of Montgomery, that is asking us to relook at a budget that we have passed and adopted for five people. You have paused the budget, you were in every meeting, and I just want this on the record, for five people. This is who we elect in the city of Montgomery. We continue to go back and revisit things for things that are not for the betterment of the city of Montgomery.
We don't, we're not going to take personal tax, so we're going to move over. I don't think this is going to be voted on tonight, uh, so we'll make.
Well, I would like to point out though, I get the opportunity to at least point out that these are also some of the largest employers, the largest permit generating entity. And we should be encouraging more people.
Spend enough time on this item.
Well, I would just like to say, we should be encouraging more large scale home builders to come to the city, to invest.
All right.
I don't see you doing that for the black community that you represent.
It was like a race issue.
Ms. Johnson.
Item eight, ordinance amending section one oh six, schedule Y, code four, this is.
All right. Well, we just got discussing, I guess this is the, uh, ordinance that will make the adjustment on this. We move on to item number nine.
Resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement with Alda for high friction treatment installation of Pelsor Avenue from Waring Wood Drive to Honeysuckle Road.
All right, Mr. Beard, you guys want to talk about that item?
That would have to be Patrick.
P D.
Uh, yes, this is a, an agreement. There's an area, uh, right there on Pelsor Avenue as you're coming down a hill right next to the Montgomery YMCA. It's, it's kind of a curve area. There've been a number of accidents in that area. Uh, we, we went to Alda, you know, they have agreed to fund this, uh, you know, a hundred percent through their, their funds to help, uh, resolve a safety issue.
That's no saying. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Next item, a hundred percent. We like that.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
District two appreciates that.
Yes, this is a, a similar type situation, um, in that, um, Ms. Beard, I think in, in conversations with, uh, with some folks that had ties to Alda, you know, similarly, you know, it was noted that maybe, hey, some improvements could be made to cross, for, uh, children to cross Wares Fair Road. Uh, and this is an agreement actually that would, uh, improve, uh, build a crossing to cross right at Wares Fair Road so the children could cross safely, uh, or safer than they can today. Uh, but it does have a match, match component though. I think it's a ninety-ten, ninety-ten match component though.
One hundred percent? Ninety-ten? Ten percent? Okay, take that. Come out District two. District two, make the ten percent match. Thank you. Next item.
Thank you, Patrick.
Item eleven, resolution authorizing execution of amendment to Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission, so proceed to the agreement.
All right, any questions on number eleven? Item twenty.
Application for restaurant retail liquor license doing business is Eight Ball Billiards, one sixty-three, Eastern Boulevard.
All right, Mr. Grant.
Yes, sir. I, I, I went out and toured the billiards this afternoon with Mr. Genright. I don't think anybody's here, is anybody from Eight Ball here? Uh, we got overrun by pool shooters and I, I've, they've got twenty-four tables in there and they've got a lot of room. Bobby, you got some bad news to tell me? Tell me.
Well, the owners have another account and they have taxes on that account.
Okay, well, that kills them unless we get our taxes paid. That took care of that, Bob. Thank you.
All right.
Item thirteen, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business is Quick Shop at forty twenty Troy Highway.
Ms. Mitch. Thank you, sir. Next item.
Fourteen, resolution appointing Michelle Somers to the museum board.
Discussion. Ms. Mitch. Next item.
Fifteen is the demolition of those listed locations.
All right, any question on demolition? All right, next item.
Sixteen, resolution declaring authorizing assistant council to fight the public instances on various lines.
All right.
Okay, Mr. President, I'd like to point out to the council, the Alabama League, uh, conference, yearly conference is coming up in May. And we have to have the voting delegates to the league by the end of April. So I will need to know who, I know this is, uh, Councilor Johnson's planning a team, but we need a first and a second delegate.
All right. Hustle.
Hustle.
We, we'll have some names, Mr. Mitch and Mr. Calhoun.
Yeah, we've only got two minutes before we get into the league.
Okay, we got.
Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Oh, oh.
You need me?
No, just, uh, you and I.
Yeah. You and I feel a lot of love. All right, in our public communication work session minutes, have Carter Goodwin and Jared Jones, Brentwood Kickball Tournament.
Wow.
Uh, good afternoon. Just want to come and thank, uh, those council people that have, uh, agreed to sponsor our tournament. It'll be next Friday down at Montgomery Business Stadium, something we're really looking, uh, forward to growing, uh, bring a lot of traffic downtown and, uh, hopefully we can grow this thing. So thank you to those council people who have agreed to, uh, sponsor and those who have not, you still got time to get your team in and hopefully we can come back and present someone with a, uh, cup, uh, from maybe, uh, Windin District. And so just thank you guys for your time and for all the support that you give. Uh, looking forward to seeing you down, uh, at Business Stadium next Friday. Uh, we start happy hour from four to six, six o'clock. We'll start playing kickball and, uh, hope to see you there. So thank you guys for your time and all you do to help support and cheer the brand. We appreciate you.
You asking the council just to sponsor the team not to play, right?
No, you play. Hey, we need players. We need utility players.
No, 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 I want to watch. All right, any question? Mr. Jones, thank you. We'll see you there. We'll make some allocation in our regular meeting before the Brentwood event. All right, okay, Mr. Patrick Johnson, an update on the state house traffic control.
Mike, if you, or, I put that slide of, uh, sent. That's not mine. There it is. Just wanted to come tonight and give, uh, just a quick update, some information to share with the council and the public. Uh, many of you probably all know there's a, a new state house being built in downtown Montgomery. Uh, but on March eighth, uh, you'll see some changes to the, uh, lane configurations that the tra- that the traveling public, uh, will encounter. Basically, uh, along Washington Avenue on the south side of the building there, uh, that, uh, you can see in blue right there. That roadway has been being two-way traffic, but beginning on March eighth, it will go to one-way, one-way, uh, to the west. Uh, as well as on Jackson Street, uh, Jackson had been being, uh, two-way traffic, it's going to one-way, uh, to the north. Uh, this is all in preparation, uh, they've got to bring in, uh, I think, two large trains to begin setting, uh, pre-gas components, uh, for the construction of the new state house. Uh, as you can see up on there, this is not a short closure. This will go on up until August of twenty twenty-six. So just wanted to bring that, uh, to the council's attention and we'll be sharing this with, uh, our, our media group so we can post this on social media, uh, for the, the public to, uh, also continue to learn about it as well.
Sounds good.
All right. Any question, Mr. Johnson?
None.
All right.
Counsel. Lawyers, Britton, any, any council have anything before we go into, uh?
Yeah, let me, let me ask a question. I, WSFA carried a, uh, deal by the mayor yesterday about a proposed soccer stadium for, and some stuff downtown. I, I'd like to have the, I'd like to know about that before the janitor at the house does. I, I wonder, I mean, it was up on TV yesterday and I was just wondering what all that's about, Jeremy. Can you update us a little bit?
Um, you, I, I think the mayor, uh, actually mentioned, uh, a lot of this in the state of the city address, talking about, uh, we're, we're being very aggressive in looking at how to, uh, improve the quality of place when we think about Montgomery. That would include an expansion, uh, possible expansion of the convention center and also possibly a downtown arena. Um, at this point, uh, you know, we're just looking at all type of avenues to increase the entertainment, uh, venues and, 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 uh, opportunities for our communities. So with that said, now, I, I will say this, uh, as I said, that was mentioned in the state of the city address. So I don't know why it's, at this time, it's blindsiding anybody because it's something that the mayor mentioned out loud in that, in that address.
I, I've got, I've got to, go ahead, though.
No, no, I, I yield to you.
Jeremy, I want to know where we at on nine-one-one. I'm still getting blown up with calls that, that's not being answered. And I apologize if that was asked about before I got here. And also, I heard that we've got some operators working from home. Is that correct?
That is not true.
Okay, good, good.
And because the system would not allow them to work from home, so that's not, that's categorically not true.
Sounds like a win.
We've actually, uh, added personnel to our team. We've added, uh, six new personnel. I know there was a newspaper article out there that said we were down to some ridiculous number. That is not true. We've actually grown five from the number we reported last time. Your name was mentioned in that article also. So, uh, I, I just want to clear the error on that also is that, uh, we're, our numbers are up near thirty, thirty-one, somewhere around there. So we need about fifty-six in total. So with that, uh, we are making improvements and hiring folks. As to the call times, I will tell you this, um, it, it's like anything, uh, you know, it's like a, an interstate a lot of times. If there's an incident where a lot of people witness said incident, everybody's calling in at that particular point in time. So it, it floods the lines. And so we're talking about anecdotal, uh, conversations that, uh, for the most part, I, I, all our calls are being answered. Uh, there are times where we have those, those instances where the operators, uh, are, are backed up with those calls. Also how that system, and we've invited the council to come see how that system works. So they understand that there's no way you can dump a call when you're a call taker. The system itself forces you to answer the call. When you go up there, there's lights above the call takers that say red, they're on a call, green, they're not on a call. And so when you go in there and you see all those lights red, they're on a call. As calls are coming in, calls are still coming in, so they sit in the system waiting to be answered once they're finished with those calls. So, uh, it's, like I said, it's like anything, there's times that there's high volume and it's just like a traffic jam on the interstate. It's going to take time for them to work through those phone calls.
That, that sounds.
Jeremy, I, I can't, I've never had an issue with our paramedics. Seems like our, our, our paramedics are getting, getting to the spot when they're supposed to and all. I, I get calls about it, but, but I don't have any problem with the paramedics.
So, so.
Does the fire department have any problem with paramedics getting calls and getting?
So let me speak to that. So you have two different dispatchers. So once the call taker takes the call, they will move it on to a dispatcher. What happens, fire, rescue, and paramedics typically do not have the full call volume that P D does. So that's what, uh, so there's two different dispatchers. There's a P D dispatcher, there's a fire rescue dispatcher.
Hey, Jeremy, I'm going to take you up and go down because I want to understand it better. So maybe one day next week I'll come down for a little bit.
You should.
Mr. President.
So, so Jeremy, let me ask you a question. Due to the fact that I have so many apartment complexes in, in, in District Six, I'm just wanting to see what the city be willing to do, a, a task force where we get the, the fire department, we get the building code, and the police department to just do a, a spot check at some of these apartment complexes. And I'm glad that the fire department informed me, the last fire, um, that happened over in my district, I think they went to the water hydrant. It was absolutely no water that the residents was telling me. Um, and I just want to make sure that we are doing those small, you know, spot checks that the police department are coming in there for us, security-wise. The building code would go in and look at some of these places so we can kind of prevent some of the things and the encounters that I'm seeing in all these apartment complexes they, they stuck in District Six. So I just want to put it on the mayor's, uh, put it on his, his, his agenda. If we can create a, a task force that would just go in and do those small checks for me, it'll hit my district tremendously.
And I saw you respond, but we do have, uh, apparatus to do that, and that's the business review, uh, the monthly business review process. Uh, but we also do check on those properties. Uh, the enforcement piece is the tough piece because as we've talked about, and, and I don't want to get too far, uh, into this conversation, uh, but when we, when we go out there, we're, we're going to have to, we're going to have to approach this in a different manner. And I would love for you to come to that meeting, uh, that we have. I think it's at, in the last week of the month, Brenda can, can, or second week of the month, maybe next week. But at, at, at that point, we do get together and talk about and strategize how we approach those, those properties that are concerns of yours. And, um, and so we're going to have to think about some new ways of doing that because if we shut them down, then we have residents that have no place to go. So we have to work through that piece also and, and come with a smart but effective way to really, uh, and, uh, get those businesses to, to change their behavior. So we appreciate your input on that. Thank you, sir.
All right, counsel, uh, we got, I've been a request to go into executive session and I want to be out for your time because I got a real special guest here today to bring the prayer. And so he's already here, so I want to make time for his time to make sure we bring him up on time. So, uh, need a, we got a, for a, uh, uh, now he made me laugh my tongue. Executive session.
I need a motion.
Need a motion? Anybody?
Make a motion. I need executive session.
For what reason?
Uh, economic development.
Mr. Attorney, is it compliance with state code?
It does, exception eight, eight seven.
Okay, we need a vote. We will not reconvene.
We're not reconvene. The council meeting was started in Prop. five oh five.
Okay, need to talk for the vote.
All the papers, please do so by rising.